That's why we needed you here, actually. So, okay. All right, well, do you need to do anything formal to start the meeting? Or call it to order, or anything, call it anything?
I'll call the meeting to order.
Okay. Order, order has been called.
The May second.
And so, we will begin. So, thanks for having me work with you all in this way. I, um, I always enjoy working with elected boards and kind of helping them both establish that foundation for working well together and then also decide what do you, as a group of people, want to accomplish together. So, it's a great time to do that with a new board member. And anytime one person comes in new, there's all kinds of relationships and dynamics that change. So, today, we're gonna spend a little bit of time talking about governing together. And, um, there were some prompt questions in your agenda materials that I'll review and just kind of get your perspective on, you know, what good governance looks like, what values are important to you as you govern together, what's important to remember when you're on the prevailing side of a vote and when you're not. And then, uh, what do you want to be known for as a board? So, we'll spend a little bit of time on that. And then, talk about the ideal board member. We'll do a little bit of exercise where I ask you to put your feet in other people's shoes and think about what's the public looking for? What's the staff looking for? And what are your colleagues looking for? And then, we'll get you out of here, one o'clock. Try to get you right on your way. Tomorrow, when we come together, it's really about, um, the strategic plan. So, you all have been through a process to get the strategic plan adopted. I think it was in November, December last year when it was, um, finally adopted. And so, um, Libby's gonna give you an overview of where things stand. And some of you all are very aware of that, but certainly wanna kinda make sure everyone understands where you are. And then, kind of find out how these focus areas, um, are fitting with your all's priorities and objectives. Are they still the right priorities? Um, and decide if there's anything new that needs to be added before we work on getting you guys, um, out the door tomorrow. I think it's four o'clock or three o'clock that we finish up with, with you all. And Janet will be with us tomorrow. And she's been a great partner in kind of shepherding the internal process for strategic planning and keeping things on track in a very dean-like way, which I think has been great support for, for Greg and for Libby, um, in this process. So, any questions about the agenda? Whenever I work with groups, I always have a set of norms, so ways that we will be together. So, I draw my little happy B. And I hope you'll be bold, so especially tomorrow when you're thinking about the future of this community and the island that you care so much about. Um, be positive and realistic. I mean, there's gonna be things you wanna get done. And then, there's, well, what can we get done? What can we accomplish? So, kind of tempering all of that. Candid and honest, um, patient and self-aware. Sometimes, that's two sides of the same coin. We have to be patient with our colleagues and aware of ourselves and how we're impacting the group. Um, engaged and fully present. So, that's a lot about technology this day and age. It kind of pulls us away. So, just try to stay here. I'll get you out on time. Um, listen with respect. No interrupting, no talking over, disagree agreeably. My experience with you all is that you're a very respectful group. I've observed you, been at your meetings. And so, um, I think it's important to say, even today, as you talk about working together and governing together, you're starting from a position of real strength. You know, I see, I see a commitment to civility and things like that that are really important to effective governance and effective leadership of an organization. So, I think that's really positive. So, before we jump into, um, kind of this, uh, the questions that I had for you all, I wanna just hit on a couple of things. So, you have a little booklet in front of you that I, maybe I'll just give you like a quick orientation to. So, I work a lot with a professor named, um, John Mountbandian. And John and I put this document together. John was a, um, professor that I had many years ago, um, at the University of Kansas. And so, he has taught, um, hundreds of city managers and, and as an academic. And, uh, he's very unique because he also ran for city commission in Lawrence and served as mayor for two terms. And also a five-member board there. They call him commissioners, but, um, so he kind of has this theory and practice understanding of, um, of local government from the perspective of, uh, board manager, council manager, here, town manager, select board, um, perspective. So, really, that professionalism piece. So, he and I put this together as a resource. And we will hit on some of these concepts in here today. Others, uh, we won't necessarily have time for. But one of the things that John has observed, and he, like me, um, John's also worked with a lot of governing bodies. And now, we, he, um, he's pretty well-retired. He works with me occasionally and, uh, which is a real joy. Um, but he's kind of identified the three, three characteristics of effective governing bodies. So, three attributes. So, one is that they're willing to address the very difficult policy matters. Um, they build the capacity to work together effectively. So, taking two hours out of your day today is kind of testament to that. And then, the third is that they work to develop a productive relationship with the staff. And understand that really, as a board, um, the staff is your problem-solving capacity. They are here to do what you want them to do and, um, to garner the resources of the organization to accomplish that. So, that is really their existence. And of course, it would just be so easy to do if it weren't for, um, there's certain obstacles that exist, um, in your way. The first of which is, um, conflicting values. So, there's a whole two-page layout in here on kind of the four public service values. And John will promote, um, that those four values, you will see, underpin every decision that you will make and what the tension of those values, um, looks like. So, the first is kind of representation, um, your accountability to the public, your, um, the service that you provide to the public. The second is really efficiency, which we manifest itself in terms of professionalism. And sometimes, representation and efficiency don't always go hand-in-hand. As you know, democracy, uh, takes time. Um, the third, social equity and diversity. So, understanding that, um, there's a need to make sure that, um, government functions for everyone. And then, the final one is individual rights. And we can sit there and think about each of those four values and recognize that we all believe in them. Um, there's something that, in, about each of them that we would hold close. But you can't in any decision hold them optimally at the same time. At least, we really haven't seen it. So, you're always making trade-offs. So, does any of you have a, like, a six-year-old in your life? No six-year-olds, seven-year-olds, five-year-old, nine-year-old? Okay, well, have you ever been around a six-year-old? So, imagine you had a...
I have a twenty-six.
Twenty-six, yeah.
It acts like six, but that's...
Yeah, that's, that's a whole... I don't have a cute little story about that one, I'm sorry. But I have a cute one about a six-year-old. So, imagine, um, you have a, a six-year-old niece or daughter or grandchild who, um, who comes home from school and they're in the first grade and they're, um, you ask them, "Well, what'd you do at school today?" And their name's Maria. You say, "Maria, what'd you do at school today?" And Maria says, "Oh, we did arithmetic." And, uh, she's still talking to you because she's not a teenager or twenty-six. And, uh, is, is, tells you, "The teacher put on the board, two plus two equals, and two plus three equals." And I raised my hand and I said, "Two plus two is four and two plus three is five." And you are just busting with pride about now, right? Because got all the right answers. But then Johnny, Johnny raised his hand and Johnny said, "No, Maria, two plus two is five and two plus three is four." And you're like, "Well, what'd the teacher do?" And she said, "Well, the teacher had us vote on the right answer." So, you raised your eyebrows, you smirked. Why?
Because right is right.
Right is right, yeah? So, you don't vote on things where there's right answers. So, what leaves, what does that leave? Everything else.
Yeah.
And so, your all's job is to not vote on two-plus-two problems. You know, that's not what comes before the board. Your all's job is to vote on issues where there are no right answers, where when all the facts are known, reasonable people can still disagree. And then, the other thing that sometimes can get in the way is oftentimes, the staff and elected officials will have a different perspective. They'll come at the same problem from a different place. And so, having some language around that can really be helpful. Um, anybody an engineer in their day life? Now, I was raised by an engineer, so I feel like I'm perfectly legitimate in making jokes about engineers. But, um, you know, engineers come at things with a real, um, correct answer. Um, the, the, the right thing to do here is a traffic circle or a stoplight or a whatever it is that they believe is the right answer. And they oftentimes will bring the manual, you know, and it's like this thick and it has, you know, if there's this much traffic here, then this is the correct thing. That's what the book says to do. And the reality is, for you all, it's never about, not always, just about what the book says. But it's also about what people want, how people want to experience living here, what the right solution is. And so, sometimes, those perspectives can clash. And so, it's just important to understand, you want the engineer to come to you with two-plus-two equals four. It's usually a good practice for them to do. It's your all's job, then, to weigh the different value decisions and make the right answer for, for your community. So, with all of those kind of things wrapped up together, um, the other real joy that you all have is everything you do happens in public without any defined roles. So, there's no actual, you know, like, when you say your job is to adopt policy, like, what, what does that even, what does that even mean, right? What is, what does that mean? Um, there's no hierarchy. I mean, you decide who the chair of the board is. The chair has, um, certain obligations to run the meeting and things like that. Um, the reality is that in many ways, that makes you the first among equals, um, to, to, to run the board meetings. Um, there's no specialization. Um, you were not elected because you are this, you know, own this slice of knowledge. You were elected by the community to represent community values. And the staff, of course, is always coming to the recommendations, to the things that they bring before you with the perspective of having been determined to be technically qualified to, to bring those types of things forward for you all. So, there's just a little bit of, of, uh, of nuance there in understanding the different roles that you all play between the staff and, and the governing board. So, all of that can make this job of governing together really challenging, so. Um, so, I'm, I'm hopeful that as we work through these things today, that we'll, remember, I said, you know, you're already starting, from my perspective at least, from a position of strength, but it'll make that foundation even stronger. So, as you're deciding tomorrow, kind of what your priorities are, that'll give you a good foundation to work through those values decision and make choices for the community, so. Questions before we jump into the questions? Now, you ready? All right, so, let's start with, um, what does good governance look like to you? So, I'm gonna pick some colors here and then just make choices of colors. So, who would like to begin? We'll just, we'll start with the first question. What does good governance look like to you?
Responsive, people feel heard. I mean, people feel heard in the sense of, we're not gonna be able to fix everything all the time, but at least they're heard.
Mm-hmm. Right, doesn't mean that you do what they say. It just means that you've heard them and they feel that way. They feel respected, yeah, good.
I think transparent, with clear process and people feel the, the ability to access the information they need.
Yeah, that's a good one. Understanding the process.
Yep. So, information and process. So, again?
You've already, you've already tested. That's not going on to the wall.
So, these are special markers. Um, they come from Germany.
Could I not do that transfer?
They are not, um...
You don't wanna be here rolling the wall after the meeting?
I'll be painting.
Maybe there should be on the wall. Maybe there's some good stuff in there. You can stay out for all meetings.
I worry more about tape than I do my markers. They're very special. They're very special markers.
They want Lynda Roberts to come after me.
Or me.
Who are you?
What else? So, what does good governance look like?
Consistent.
Consistent.
So, are we looking at this for, from us or from the whole town? I was kind of thinking of...
Yeah.
I was thinking of staff and us.
Yeah. So, we're definitely gonna get at the perspectives of the board in, in different shoes. But I think when you think about good governance, thinking about it from different perspectives and putting that up here is fine. There's no, uh, there's no wrong. So, if you wanna clarify it with a certain perspective, then that's, that's great.
Can we say things?
Pardon me? Can you say things?
Yeah.
Um, what do you think? Yeah, go ahead.
Fact-based.
Fact-based. So, know all the facts. Be sure that everyone has, is grounded in the same facts and recognize that, that all the facts are known. You still may come to different conclusions as a body.
And identifying.
Identifying.
The facts and information that you need.
So, that kind of gets back to being transparent.
Correct information.
Yeah, they have to be, they play together, right?
I'm gonna throw one out there. Someone else can maybe reword this. Effective prioritizing. Like, you know, we, we have that now, I think, with the strategic plan. But it's like when we don't prioritize, it just gets all muddled and we're kind of lost.
Well, everyone says everything they're giving us now fills our plan. You know, this is the strategic plan, you know? You have to do this. You know, what it is. That's what they all say. That's what I've found. Long-range vision, like long-term vision.
Long-term vision, absolutely. And that's one of those roles, too, that you all play, that, I mean, you really own.
Part of us being proactive. What else?
Organization.
So, good governance is...
Keeping, keeping track of everything that we're...
Organized and on track.
Keep, keep in the list.
Just write the silver sheet.
It's the same, that's sort of like, or gets on a...
Sort of like what?
Oversight. You know, the sort of thinking, organization, on-track, oversight are all sort of the same thing.
Okay.
What you say.
Also, taking accountable, I don't know if that goes with consistent.
Mm-hmm.
Large amounts of caffeine.
Yes. Not that you have any conflict of interest with that.
But it's also including the public, like, so, I don't know what the word is.
Inclusive.
Inclusive, but I wanna get, not say inclusive, meaning, that's a different word.
Yeah.
Maybe, but like...
Community engagement?
Yeah, engagement. We're not doing it all on our own. It takes everyone. Take the...
And you need to build, you need to build consensus. You need to build...
Consensus building, definitely, yes, yes.
So, I think inclusive is important, too.
I guess inclusive is, yeah.
Making sure that all voices are part of the discussion.
Civility. Promoting it.
Yeah.
Don't really know how to word it, but it's, it's, to me, it's sort of reflective and nimble, but that's not, because I know government isn't. But it's the ability to look at, identify the things that aren't working and then make the changes that needed, need to be changed in its somewhat timely manner.
That's kind of proactive.
That's a mouthful.
That's a mouthful. I guess it's, um...
Done in one word.
One word. It's called charades.
I don't know how to say this, but knowing what you don't know. You know?
So, he said, "Look at the system, recognize the need for change and execute." So, it's kind of all wrapped up in that kind of assessing, plan, do, check, act, reassess. Good.
Finding common ground.
I disagree with that.
How would you see it? I don't trip today. Good.
What was it?
Well, I was saying, knowing what you don't know. We're not, we don't have the answers for everything. We're not expected to. We're not, we're expected to try to get to that point.
Is that about roles, too, Greg?
Rules.
Roles? Kind of understanding...
Rules.
The role of the, the role of the town?
Yes.
Role of different roles?
It's sort of identity.
They're done for the day.
It's very, it's very nice. Um, sort of identifying weaknesses or understanding weaknesses or understanding...
Vulnerabilities.
Yeah, I meant, like, yeah, understand the weakness. Like, you just call it a weakness, not knowing. But there's some things we don't know what, going back to Libby's thing, fact-based. We know that we don't know some things. We have to find out. It's incumbent upon us to get to that truth. But yeah, that goes with roles.
Yes, choosing the right people to be in certain roles to where their expertise lies.
And you have talent in the right spots. This is, this is good. This is a good list. And I'm, I'm kind of, interesting, you use some words even that I, um, when, when John and I, uh, kind of identified roles, um, that elected officials play. So, we did some work together in, in 2016 where we said, "Well, one of the roles is this vision role." So, kind of having that long, long-range vision. That's something that, that you all can own. Um, another one, you used the word oversight. And that was, that is absolutely one of the roles that the elected body has. Um, community building. So, this kind of idea of being connected with the community, bringing people together to make decisions. And then, responsive kind of comes into this constituent advocacy or representation role that you have. And then, the last one is, um, uh, the trustee and stewardship role, which could kind of probably get wrapped up in accountability and consistency. You can kind of see that. And then, we also have the decision-making, which is what you all do when you get together and, uh, and vote on things that don't, aren't two-plus-two problems, so. So, you kind of identified them all. And what's interesting is individually, um, sometimes I'll have people rank those six roles. What comes easiest to you? And then, where does the board gravitate? And what do you need to do to be more effective? And kind of thinking about, one of the ways a board adds value is by focusing on those things that only the board can do. And so, there are, you know, you are the only, the only people who really can set this agenda for bringing people together and establishing that long-term vision. And so, there's a lot of value when you focus your energy in doing those types of things. So, what about values? What values are important to you in governing?
Fairness.
Exactly what was in my head. Julia, do you find, because I'm going to my own personal values, right off about justice, fairness, going down the line. Do you find most people go that route? Is it one of the same?
Um, frequently, there's a lot of overlap because those, if those are what kind of motivates you when you think about governing, then you want, you know, justness to be important part of that. So, certainly, there's overlap in those, yeah. Do we write justice down? Is that another one you say?
To me, that's the same, yeah.
Fairness, justice, society. Okay. What else? Values are important to you.
Consistency of that.
Mm.
It's like kind of tr- true representation, thinking about what the majority of the community wants, not necessarily always your own internal.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I, I agree with Dawn. Making the decision that's best for the community and not yourself or kind of what you would first react to. I think it is a hard...
Or your, your industry or your business or you have...
Yeah, or your own personal values.
Yeah, setting aside any person.
I think that's one of the more difficult, challenging things I felt my first year of kind of knowing which is which.
I'm gonna write, not motivated by self-interest. So, kind of that, that greater good concept is really key.
It becomes tricky when you bring your own personal values into it. Maybe it's not financially a self-interest, but it's what you feel is right and then maybe not the best for the community. I think that's difficult.
Truthfulness?
Yeah, truthful, definitely.
You gotta, you have to say what you really think.
The integrity of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, what Greg said, integrity.
I don't know if the right word is like commit. Like, some things take a long time and a lot of effort, so it's tenacity.
Yeah, tenacity, yeah.
Government is slow.
Keeping the focus on the long game.
Yeah.
That's hard.
Commitment to it. I don't know if this is a value or not, but, um, recognizing good work. Or, you know...
Employee recognition.
How about supportive? Appreciation.
Yeah, appreciation, recognition.
Gratitude.
Yeah.
Something you don't hear a lot in the governing world, gratitude. That goes, that goes both ways. That's just, not just for us and staff, but for the public.
For the public as well.
Yeah, feel appreciated.
Yeah, thanks for coming to a meeting.
We're so busy, it's hard to do that.
Yeah.
I can only imagine humility, humble. It must be very humbling to do what you're gonna do.
That's why we're so great.
I said humble, not horrible.
There's some, there's some inherent conflict in some of these, isn't there? E- even in, you know, kind of this idea of consistency, which was here and here, kind of balanced with recognizing the need to change and execute it. Kind of keep it the same. You know, we kind of value predictability and at the same time, we need the organization. We need the community to change or accept change. And so, there's just inherent conflict in all of this.
Julia, I thought, I read, right, the way I saw consistency was us being consistent in what we do on a daily, annual basis. Not consistency in not changing parking.
Right, yeah.
Or keeping parking the same.
Yeah.
I felt it was more...
Applying the same rules.
Yeah.
Exactly. Yeah, that's...
Is that what you guys felt?
Yeah.
So, you're, uh...
Because it's an application.
Don't you know who I am? It's not a primary motivator.
What's, I guess, sort of finite balance, I, I think, showing empathy. Like, people come to us with situations that, you know, that they understand that, um, we understand the situation.
So, we have to have the ability to admit when we're wrong.
Vulnerability?
Or to change our minds. Because people, people definitely find that hard to do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know if we're gonna get into that, but I, I have found this last year and a half that, that what Dawn said is interesting because now I come to the board thinking a certain way and I, now that I kind of know how it works, I'm open-minded and I could change, listening to Matt, Rita, or whoever talk about something, I could change my mind. And at first, I struggled with that. Like, wait a second, am I, am I soft?
Yeah, but be wishy-washy?
Right, or am I, do I, am I really listening to the board? You have a good point and I can lean towards this way now.
Yeah. So, what about when the, when it's time to vote? When it's time to kind of be, uh, be accountable for things? What's important to remember when you're on the prevailing side and then when you're not?
It's not personal?
Not personal.
Tightness.
Not personal. So, don't take it that way and don't make it that way, right? Don't take it personal, don't make it personal.
So, what's the question again?
What's important to remember? So, as a, as a board member, when you're on the prevailing side of a vote and, and when then, when you're not? So, thinking about it in particular on those close votes, when it's a controversial issue. Could go either way. What's important to remember?
I think there's, uh, you know, I think consensus is great, but that disagreement is, uh, also room for more discussion and, you know, ultimately, probably more representative of what's going on. So, I guess that not having a consensus vote is, has its own positives.
It's not over, we can, we can, we're gonna, we're gonna see it again anyway, like the dogs. Never ends, so. Sort of kidding, but seriously, when you, you vote, if there's something important, it takes more than, you have to stick to it. It takes the tenacity we talked about. You have to commit to it and stay at it to build the consensus, you know?
Yeah, I like that it's not over. I've, I've found when I was chair, when there would be a dissenting vote or two votes against, I would reach out to the board members next day because it moves so fast. I went to, to maybe hear more, to listen, not just throw the dissenting vote away.
They can't please everyone, as always, on the inside. Not even on the board, I mean, public, somebody unhappy.
Unlike a lot of rooms I'm in, I feel like we have some control here, so I could pick it up to seventy-two, so.
What about compromise? Can't make everybody happy. But you can make everybody unhappy.
All the time. Just make everyone a little unhappy and you're fine.
Yeah, that's why an airplane, you know, it's too hot, it's too cold. If people are complaining on both sides, it must be exactly the right temperature, right? That's true. So I think for the board, this too can get, you know, how does this kind of manifest itself? So sometimes you're really fundamentally opposed to a decision for whatever, whatever reason. You feel like you're representing a certain segment of the community and maybe that you believe that's the loudest voice or perhaps you believe it's just a voice that hasn't been heard sufficiently on a particular issue. And so it is, it, it may not be personal, but it certainly feels like a loss. You feel loss in the expression of a vote where you're on the, on the dissenting end. And, you know, I, I have all kinds of stories from other places, but, you know, one of the, one of the things that happens is you all are a body. There's five of you and any three of you get to make the decision. And that is the direction you give to the town administration. That's what they're going to do because that's the will of the body. And it is not the place for those who dissent to say, hey, Libby, you know, I know that's how the vote went, but, you know, it might come back around. I mean, I, I think, you know, just, you ought to go real slow on this implementation because it's going to come back and then you're just going to have to reverse everything. And, and I have seen that manifested itself in letters to state legislatures, on official letterhead, things like that, that certainly would be, you know, no, no, like you shouldn't do that. So kind of recognizing that.
Previous boards have had people do exactly that.
Okay, even here?
On select boards have done exactly that. They've gone to the state and gone against the.
Gone against the board.
Will of the board or the vote of the committee and the vote of the community and the vote of the board and gone, and undermined things.
Yeah, and, and so kind of what you're all's take on that, you know, kind of the, you support the decision of the board? You know, I may not agree with my colleagues, but I respect that it's the vote of the board and that is what the administration has been directed to do. It doesn't make Libby and Greg bad people for doing what they've been told to do. But it can be really tough sometimes, especially when it is, you know, three, two or four, one with a really loud opposition there on the, on the one side. So, so what's important in that from, from your all's perspective? So from those lessons, Matt, what would you say?
I think sometimes, I would say sometimes the administration, you know, if it is, if it, if it's going back and forth every time the board changes and it's, it's contentious issue, pick paid parking. You know, we have a board that says we want to do it. We have, you know, a, a majority of staff and a lot of people that have worked downtown who are kind of really upset about it. But we all kind of know it's the right thing and it's been coming for twenty years. You know, if one board votes for it and another votes against, another, you know, at some point you have to have the vision and, and lay, and lay out what you're going to do and really try to stick with it because you know what's coming. It's come a bunch of times. And so there are times where, you know, if, if the, the public is really loud, loud and yells and screams and you get a three, two vote because the public's yelling and screaming, sometimes I think you do have to be kind of reasonably, like you can't keep going being wishy-washy. You can't keep going back and forth. So there are tough times where it's not as clear cut as, oh, well, it's three, two, Libby, get to work. You know, sometimes she knows it's going to be three, two the other way in two weeks or in, in a year. And it's not going to happen anyway. So I think there's times when they have used their discretion and I think the discretion sometimes is important. You know, I think the stronger the vote is, if it's four, one or five, oh, I think that's clear direction. But sometimes I don't think, you know, I think sometimes three, two, when the public is yelling and screaming at you is kind of, you know, people can waffle for all different reasons. You know, we all have a hard time in front of the public sometimes.
So can we play with this a little bit?
Yeah.
So you're the two side on whatever this vote is, okay? And so that's your advice.
Yeah.
How do the three feel? If the administration drags their feet, doesn't do what you've said? Is that their prerogative?
Nope. I think it depends on what, what, why people voted, why they voted. If they went in, if they went in thinking they're going to vote and a bunch of people's sensations path want some more money, give it to them. I'll use that as an example and people just go, well, we better give it to them, I don't want them mad at me. You know, I think when we revisit it, I think it's easier to, to turn it. You know, it's hard in front of the camera, in front of people who.
Absolutely.
You know, the people on Surfside Road who want us to take their roads and pay for everything. And now they're upset that they're, you know, the roads aren't going to be done for twenty years. You know, so there's time, and I sit and I write them letters and say, well, you know, if we had bettered this, they'd be done a lot quicker. And they get mad at me, but that's the truth. And so, so sometimes you're on the, the losing side of these things, but maybe you're on the losing side, but it's the right side.
Yeah.
So anyway, that's.
So there's some experience talking there, yeah.
Yeah, I've been on the wrong side of, I've been on the right side of some of it. I've been pushing certain things for a long time. I've been on the wrong, on the wrong side and the right side.
I think that's when hindsight comes in, when you, you get to know that or not. So I think you have to go with, it was a three, two vote.
Yeah.
You have to go with, with the board.
Yeah.
And there might be a gut feeling like this might not work out, but it was the vote. Because if you don't, then, then everybody's putting their own judgment into it and it gets really wishy-washy.
Well, the statement that you all talked about when you're talking about values, the ability to admit when you're wrong, I mean, that's, that, that wisdom can be really important if you're on the prevailing side of a decision and you continue to hear from certain voices and they become persuasive to you for whatever reason, you do have the ability to reconsider. If you're on the majority, you can bring it back, correct? And so there is that opportunity to kind of recognize. And don't get mad at the staff if they've already, you know, gone down that road because that's the direction they're headed. And so when you think about all of this, it's like, what's the staff looking for? You know, they want, they want consistency, same rule for all, but they also are looking for the board to give them direction. And so in all of this, you know, what we're doing tomorrow in particular, knowing what you all want to accomplish is really important to the staff because that's, that's, they're here to support your political agenda as a body, not as individuals, but as a body. So kind of recognizing, when they hear march, they're going to march, that's what they are here to do. So if it wasn't your idea, kind of understanding, they would march the other way if that's the way the vote went.
Yeah.
Good, good.
Oh, I was just going to say, I mean, I think that as an effective board, you've just got, you've got to be courteous about it, that that was, if you're on the non-provailing side. Because the next vote, you may be on the, it may be the complete opposite. And you can say like, yes, I didn't agree with it, but that was the decision of a majority of the board. And you don't do things like write letters to the editor stating a totally different position in my mind. I think, I don't think, I think that part of your commitment is that you don't go.
So humble in victory, gracious in defeat.
On your own outside of it, like publishing.
Uh huh. Would you say that the, that your expectation of your colleagues is to support the prevailing decision as a, as a member of the body? Not to, you know, necessarily be out banging the bell, but, you know, kind of being respectful support even in dissent? Is that what you?
I think there's a balance there where, you know, when the paper's getting close to you, you could say, well, here's why I voted against it. Here's why I think this is the wrong direction. But however, this is what we voted, our hand, this is what we voted on and we're going to move forward with it. I think it's very human and I don't think I was very good at this in the beginning, like my first year when I was on the, you know, on the vote one, voter two vote side, it feels a little personal and then if it didn't work out, you want to say, I told you so, but how do you, how do you not do that? And say, okay.
We can all learn from this and, and look forward to a new direction.
Just to kind of bite your tongue and not do the I told you so.
Yeah.
You've got to be honest with people too. You, you're, Jason was really good and Jason was, geez, why did you feel that way? What, what, you know, you don't have enough time sometimes to sort it out at the meeting. So he was really good. He mentioned earlier of calling and saying, what was it, why, you know? And sometimes it's, you know, I feel really strongly about it, sometimes it's just because we don't have enough information. You know, we can't do a diff, no one knows what they're talking about.
Yeah.
And so, you know, so how can we vote on something that we don't, you know, sometimes like you've got the decision maker here.
Yeah.
Sometimes, you know, and we've had people on previous boards who thought that, you know, anything that came to them had to have a vote. And sometimes it doesn't. Sometimes we don't have enough information to do the right thing. And so that's a, if you, if you view this as you're a judge and whatever you bring you as long you can look at, then I think that you're doing the town a disservice. You're not looking at, you know, sort of really looking at the full picture and, you know, and trying to figure it out. And so sometimes, you know, so anyway, I think.
Sometimes the appropriate decision is to not make a decision.
Is to say we don't have.
That is your vote, is to not decide yet.
Well, to say here, you know, to politely, rather than say it in the newspaper or whatever, to politely say, hey, Dawn, here's why I think you're wrong. You know, are you telling me, oh, Matt, you're not thinking about this? Oh, okay. You know, and you could do that, it's hard to, you can do that on the camera somewhat, but you can do it more sometimes after.
One last thought, I think it was our last meeting, I was a, I was the one vote, you know, and I just couldn't understand it. And, and of course I didn't go to the paper or anything like that, but I talked to a couple of board members afterwards and, and continued to express what I felt and they said why they voted and it made more sense and then I kind of understood a little more. I still would have voted the same way.
So be curious is kind of what I'm hearing you say. So if, you know, kind of instead of, instead of opposing, it's kind of like, what is, how is it that we all have the same set of facts and information and we come to different conclusions? What is it that made that the right decision to you? So remembering to be curious about your colleagues' perspectives and, and why they voted a certain way.
Because if I would have just let it sit there and just spin and spin.
Yeah.
You know, just talking to a couple of board members the next day was, was very helpful.
Good. All right, so you get to, remind me, do you all have another election next spring?
Every year.
Every year, somebody's up. So you have ten months together for sure as this body, you have ten months. So my question is, what do you want to be known for? What do you want this select board to be known for?
Uh, well, I would love for us to get us to our ten percent in affordable housing with the next ten months. At minimum, save Harvard, but maybe.
So let's save Harvard now for two years.
So, so getting the ten percent.
Are you talking about specific things, Julia, or more things like?
Good looks.
Best looking.
Could be either, it could be, it could be you're known for being civil in all our interactions and it could be known as the select board that, that got housing taken care of. I mean, it, it could be, it could be both an expression of your values in policy or in behavior. So there's no wrong way.
Tackling tough issues.
I, I think we've already started this beforehand, but I think it's continuing is our board meetings are very fair and we listen. And I've, I've heard over time that the public has said, you guys, you know, run a good meeting, you listen and people feel heard. I want to continue that.
I'd like to see us engage the public more and see people attending the meetings or speaking up during public comments, being a little bit more engaged.
You, you want us to be known for that?
Just that people feel like they can come and speak.
So just at the meetings, like is that a specific thing or is it just, is it option, more ways of engaging?
I don't know. I think, yeah, just being able to reach out even via email and just feel that we're all a board that's willing to engage with the public and not, somebody that's not going to respond to your email or not take the time to meet with you.
Matt's helped me to do that because you are really good at responding to everybody.
I try to.
Knowing you do that, I've tried to kind of follow suit. Sometimes it's not so easy to respond to everyone.
I only, I respond to the ones that are most contentious or most like, you know, most clueless. If the people really have no clue, that's when the ones I, I make sure I try to respond to them.
Educate.
Yeah, because they're the ones that are going to be so mad, more mad.
Yeah.
So, anyway.
Sidebar. I don't always know when individual board members have responded to someone because sometimes, I mean, the email comes in all differently. Sometimes it's just to the board and I've never seen it. Sometimes it's to me and, sometimes it's to Erica. And I've, I've never seen it and it's forwarded to me. So sometimes there's this kind of awkward, well, who's going to respond? And should it be one response or should be all? So what I have taken to doing, and I don't know if this is appropriate for right now or not, but typically I will prepare a response and send it around and say, hey, board, I'm going to respond like this. If anybody wants to talk to me about it or change it or put it on the agenda or whatever, we're going to know by X date, otherwise I'm sending it like this. Or I might just say, I'm going to take care of it and BCC you or something like that. But it's very helpful if the message is sort of like the same back to the people so that I don't say something and then a board member says, I don't agree with that.
Right.
We're not going to do that, or, you know.
I guess tough, when Matt and I both respond and we're both on, and we disagree or on total sides and you come in.
And then there's something else different.
Yeah.
And that's even worse. I, I mean, I don't, I can't even really think of a time when that's happened that I know of. I think we're probably typically on the same page, which was whatever the response should be. But I don't know if there's a very good way of really confirming that. And I, and I think it's good when board members, you know, individually respond back. Obviously, I like it if they've supported what I've said. Or say something sort of similar to it at least. But I know, there's not a good way to know that.
Yeah.
Maybe that's just a.
So I heard a couple of things, let me see if I got them. So one is if you're not on the initial email, keep the town manager in the loop. So copy her on the response so she's aware of what's out there. If she is, she'll prepare a response and, and make sure that you all are coordinated in what that is.
I think it depends on what, what the email was.
Yeah.
There are certain things that need an official response, there's certain things that you're just going back and say, you know, you're just going back and saying, yeah, great, it'd be great if you're on the cannabis committee, you know.
And, and some of them are not, uh, some of the emails might be sort of rhetorical that come in. There's no real answer.
Right.
It's.
And then sometimes we can say something that she can't say. You know, so sometimes like on the Surfside Crossing, you know, I saw, the first four or five, I ignored them and then I realized, jeez, they're all sending kind of the same thing and they're all kind of like going to be sorely disappointed here. So I started going back and then I did share it. But there's things I can say, she can't say. This, this, this law is written by, to benefit the developers and the state is full of crap and blah, blah, blah. She's not allowed to say that. I can say that. So, you know, so there's a little more leeway. You know, so there are times where I think it is better to have one of us sort of, you know, being able to say what we want to say because she has to be, you know, Libby has to be careful.
Be very coordinated when there's seven of us.
Yeah, and sometimes you can't do that. Like people expect us to have slightly different views and to, you know, and to represent different segments. I mean, that's.
Julia, I don't know if this is something we would be known for, but, you know, it's more of a, how do we continue to disagree as we, as we will, but never throw each other under the bus? I don't know what the word is, integrity?
Well, it's also, Julia mentioned that idea of respectful dissent.
Yeah.
And I think to me, because you said it earlier, it's, it's different than necessarily support of the prevailing decision, but I think there's respectful dissent and that has to do with, you know, not throwing dissenting parties under the bus.
That's the word I was looking, I was looking for a term, respectful.
Yeah, respectful dissent.
I can't wait to blame you when this all goes wrong.
On social media.
On social media with a few derogatory words thrown.
For sure, for sure. So I think, you know, these will, these will serve you well, just to kind of. So I think, you know, these will, these will serve you well, just to kind of remember, um, kind of what your hopes are for working together and for tackling tack, tough issues and getting to these real specific, hard to achieve goals in in your community. So I think it'll be a great, great foundation. So in front of you, um, there are three piles of sticky notes, three colors. And there's a black sharpie. And I'm going to invite you to please use the black sharpie just because when I take a picture of this, it's going to work a lot better. So um, we'll say the public is kind of purple, the staff is blue, and your colleague will be yellow. And this is, this exercise is a little bit of a riff on design thinking where you're, um, you want to put yourself in the shoes of the user so that you design a better product, right? So if you were the um, the customers of the board, different customers, and think about them in these three categories. First of all, what do you think the public is looking for in a member of the select board? So kind of how would they describe the ideal member of the board? And one idea per sticky note, you can use all, as many as you want. So kind of write large enough. I am going to photograph this later, so we'll try to fit it in a, in a report. But so what's the public looking for? And then, and and I'm going to ask you to be pretty intentional about putting the shoes on and putting the shoes off. So then move, shift from the public to the staff. And in this spot, you're probably thinking mostly of the cabinet, the people that you interact with the most, you know, the town manager, the assistant, the cabinet. So what are the, what's the staff looking for in a board member? How would they describe the ideal member of the board? And then change seats. Think about your colleagues. What are they looking for in their board colleagues who will be governing together? So write as many sticky notes as you want. I'll put them all up here and give you a minute to do that, okay?
Public staff, okay, we're color coded.
Purple is the public. Blue is the staff. Yellow is your colleague. David R. Tease.
You just did a rotation.
He's going to do it again. What happened? You got shot.
What?
David R. Tease.
See?
There's been lots of weird stuff happening in the D R.
Oh, yeah. It was a hit on him.
Was it really?
I said it was a hit. It had to be. He's sleeping with the uh, the wife of a drug addict, supposedly, yeah. It's in the newspaper, yeah. And so he's, and so they, the guys that shot him were policemen.
Blanking on the word.
One of them was, the both were policemen. They, he got beat up so bad that he couldn't speak. They, the people in the bar, but only I. You can find all this online. They beat him like, the guy who shot him and the guy on the bike, one of them died away and one of them was beat up really badly. I don't know if they found him yet, yeah. But he was, uh, they said it was clearly a hit and they were trying to kill him.
Wow, big puppy. He must have killed him.
I know, I know.
I mean, it wasn't a Yankee because, you know.
Is that you, Derek?
That's been announced.
That's good, yeah. So it's not just, yeah.
Actually, I think Julia specifically, she had specifics.
Yeah, my list of demands is. Anything else? Anybody have anything else? All right. Well, maybe um, somebody besides me come up and read the public one and just uh, we got it there. My voice gets annoying. What's the public looking for?
The beginning.
In the ideal board member.
At the top, we got attentive, paying attention to public, available. I like that one. A community builder. Focusing on greater good. Did you push these in any certain?
I tried to kind of capture like things or themes, so, but not necessarily.
Frugal, intelligence, well-versed on issues. And then underneath that, we've got good listener, vision, honest, transparent, transparent, sympathetic, informed, what's this one? Equitable and fair, provide clarity, fair, fairness, respectful. Yeah, that was all kind of the same.
Mm-hmm. And then I think.
Yep. Accountability, outspoken, champion the underdog, being a voice for most vulnerable, and independence. That's what the public's looking for.
It's a good list, huh? Anything up there anybody disagrees with or thinks differently? No? Capture it. Great. Somebody want to read staff? What's the staff looking for? Greg, you want to do it?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, what does the staff want? You got things to say. You have a chance to say them.
All right. So we have um, supportive, supportive, listen and fair, realistic, respectful, prepared, informed, consistent, not whimsical, consistent, recognition.
Of resources.
Of resources, appreciative, communicative, intelligence, patience, building relationships with staff, paying attention and responding, respect boundaries, respect boundaries, setting clear policy, create a vision, never forgets where or when a meeting was.
I made you look good today.
And having known that was not staff, forgetting when or where. So they just put this one over here.
Timeliness.
That's what you want. Well, I had to add in the forgetting where it was.
Um, understands, um, understands order of operations, can identify conflicts of interest.
Okay. Anything, sometimes we think that the staff wants something and we're not so sure that it's a, that it's really the right thing. Um, anything up here that you think is not a realistic expectation for the staff to have of you?
Forgetting meetings.
Forgetting meetings.
I went hard to go.
I'm going to put this, understanding the order of operations with respecting boundaries, it seems kind of similar.
Yeah.
Understanding the process and how things work.
And I that I wrote that one. I was thinking, who responds when and where? So it is sort of understanding that.
Clear policy, that vision.
I like the the relationship building side of it because it's, you know, appreciation, respect, that kind of stuff.
Yeah. Oh, that's real important.
Can I just go back to the public for one moment?
Of course.
Because I, you know, I I don't think perhaps it's, in a way, come up enough and I, um, frugality. I like that, I'm guessing Matt, that was you?
Pretty easy to guess.
No one's ever used the word frugal before. I see sometimes like stewardship or fiscally responsible, but actually the word frugal.
Well, that right there.
Well, back to New England.
Yeah.
Um, but I think frugality also suggests there's a certain wisdom to the spending and I think that, you know, Matt definitely carries that. Uh, you know, and I think Jim did as well. Um, but I think that is something that the public absolutely expects of all of our decisions.
And that's one of their biggest complaints sometimes. And so what are you guys doing? You're just doing whatever. You're not even thinking about it.
And I think.
So we have to really explain that we are.
Yeah, and that almost goes back to, you know, they, what are we known for? And I would love that we have a lot of these um, sort of more visionary goals. But it would be wonderful if if people felt that the decisions that we made were also frugal.
They could be frugal if we're not good at.
They could be frugal if we're not good at.
If we're not good at explaining it and getting it out there.
Yeah.
Because I think we we are to a certain extent, but what you said, Matt, you got to be able to explain it.
Yeah.
And educate people. And the process that we have, which is in general, is, keeps us on the frugal side.
Yeah.
Just because town meeting votes and.
Yes, it's true.
Except the government, all, I mean, rules may change that. So we're trying to be frugal about building a fire station and we try to be so frugal that ends up paying two and a half million dollars more. Because that's the state law. It was just the way it is. And it's been on the topic.
All right. Who wants to come and um, hear what their colleagues have to expect of them?
I don't know what else wants to.
It's easier on the outside.
Jumping out of your way.
We've got uh, collaborative, intelligence, consistent, collaborative again, thoughtful, focused, paying attention, independent thinker, not easily swayed, not swayed by political pressure, understanding of differing opinions, votes for the greater good, open-minded, open to listening, communicative, supportive, learns from the past to move forward, agree to disagree, show up for meetings, doing the work, informed, prepared, respectful, honest, complementary skill sets, solution oriented.
Such a collaborative was the theme there. Couldn't you be able to work together?
Yep.
With respectful dissent.
Yeah. Definitely see that. What commonality between all three did you hear?
Communication.
Communication.
Collaboration.
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 But it's intelligent.
Mm-hmm. It is actually, intelligence is in all three as well. So and and with that kind of that.
Respectful.
Respectful, fairness.
And prepared.
Yeah, there's a lot of prepared and formed.
And honest.
Any outliers? Anything that's like, just showed up in one space? There's a real specific expectation?
I think the um, recognition of resources from the staff side.
Mm-hmm.
And that whole sort of understanding the, sort of some of the administrative aspects.
Yeah.
Yeah, because the board and the public want everything done.
Right. Right. Yeah, you know, I think it's, it's just kind of interesting. There's this, you know, certainly, um, while someone did say, yeah, the 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 public is looking for the board to set the. the public is looking for the board to set the vision, you really get that amplified in the staff perspective, like they want the vision, they want to know what the game plan is so they can get it done. That's not necessarily something that you expect of one another, um, but it is an external expectation that people have of you of the, of the governing board. And certainly, there's consistency then in, in how you work together.
Then, that's somewhat hard, we're doing better at it, but it's somewhat hard to do with the board changing every year.
Right.
With three year terms and the board changing every year, it, it is a little difficult.
Yeah, the, the, there's no continuity, and do you have a, outside term limit as well? Or not here, so you can serve for a long period of time, but, but there's the potential for change every year, and so there's really.
Insignificant change, because when there's two board members.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That can be big, can be big. I, I found this collection here very interesting, just um, not swayed by political pressure, vote for the greater good, independent thinker, not easily persuaded, yeah, understanding different opinions, just kind of, there's this a desire for you, your colleagues to be kind of firm in their position, so like, I know what I can expect all the time from Dawn, I know what she's, I know how she expresses herself on this issue, I know where she's coming from, you're kind of looking for that maybe in one another a little bit. And at the same time, you know, the public wants you to listen and pay attention and um, you expect to speak out, expect that they want you to speak out for the people who are vulnerable, and so I think you carry that, you've certainly carried it to your strategic plan. So that's very important. When John and I were doing um, some of this work together, we tried to do the Letterman's top ten list, you know? I wonder how long I can say Letterman's top ten and people will know who Letterman was, because, you know, it's a dying thing, right?
Christie, he's the talk show host.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, back before there were other funny people. Um, so communities is, is one, and that they, that they use their office to convene conversations that matter and recognize that one of their primary roles to build community, and I think you all talk about that in vision, and you talk about that in this idea of being the voice for the most vulnerable. This concept of brand is really interesting to me, so, a brand like protects and enhances the value of the brand of their community at all times, so, um, again, I see you all as a very civil and respectful board, which is a great place to be. Um, I got called to work down in Dallas, Texas one time, big fifteen member city council, and they had um, one council member who had gone to jail for physically attacking a staff member, and uh, and then another one who threatened um, a staff member, and so they had kind of two real bullies on the, on the city council there, and they're, you know, there's, I'm not gonna, frankly, some person who's in their forties and that's how they choose to behave, I'm probably not gonna have a huge impact. But it's really what the body allows, and so just this idea that you all are always representing the brand of Nantucket, and so, you know, if you were on a corporate board, your number one job is to protect the value of the brand, and so that question of, you know, does this enhance the value of our brand? You know, does it, is it supportive of what we want to be known for um, in the community, kind of what is that, and really owning and, and wearing that at all times is important. Yeah, this concept of majority is, is really important, we talked about it from, um, you know, the four one vote, the three two and five oh. Uh, from the staff perspectives, it's all the same, majority rule is how we make decisions, um, but understands that, you know, first of all, um, you all can't get, you as an individual can't get anything done without at least two of your colleagues joining in on that and giving the direction, none of you have the ability to direct the staff to do anything. So, kind of just realizing that you need one another, and so, you know, when you say the word, we want our colleagues to be supportive, sometimes that's very transactional, you know, I want you to support me on this, and I'm gonna support you on things, and we sometimes think politics like that is a dirty word, and, and yet really, negotiation and compromise are the skills of your craft, and so there's a lot of value in, yeah, you know, well, we've got three two, how could we, how could we get to four one, how could we get to five oh? You know, there's, how many people can we get to stand inside of agreement on this and then strengthen the overall decision for people? Um, unique power, understand that you have things that you can do that no one else in the community can do, and realize when you're doing that, you're demonstrating your value, um, no right answers, yes, man.
Back to majority?
Yeah.
There's times when you'd want it to be four one or five oh.
Yeah.
There's times when you want it to be three two. If you have a tough, you know, I, I think.
Uh-huh.
Because I think, you know, and Libby, correct me if I'm wrong, if it's a five oh vote, it, it's taken one way, if it's a three two vote, so, I don't know, there's times when I think a three two vote, when it's a really tight issue, is a good thing, because it signals to the union, or it signals to the, you know, the HTC people upset or whatever, that we struggled with it.
So sometimes they can give a that, and sometimes people will say, oh, everything they do is five oh, it's just a rubber stamp, that's all they do is rubber stamp, like that's a, like it's a bad thing. And I would say, if there's no discussion, if there's no obvious negotiation and compromise that has gone to get you there, that's a possibility. If however, you have a really controversial issue and there's a three's two split, and you can make significant concessions that bring other people inside of that decision, then perhaps, um, the community sees that as, you know, trying to reflect as many values as possible. You're absolutely right, one of the things John will say, and he says it way better than I do, but, if you're, if the vote is four the one, four to one, the one person can say outrageous things, like that's, it's, there's, it's okay, because you're the one person, you're representing a certain voice. When it's three two, you have to be really careful, um, when it's a close call, just kind of recognizing that this could go either way at any given time, and so that respectful dissent becomes so important on issues that are potentially dividing the community, and they're dividing them around this idea of how you're weighing different values. Is it social equity that I'm holding most value in right now when I make this decision? Or is it individual rights for me to do what I want on my own property, for me to make as much money as I want? You know, what, what are you balancing, what are you weighing? And different people will come to different conclusions, but just realizing, it's how you're weighing values on a specific thing at any given time, and you all become the external expression of community values in that decision making. I, I think that's a good perspective, so thank you.
And it's, yeah.
But there could be that, where the discussion's at the table, and it's like, well, if we took this out of the motion.
Yeah.
Would we all support it, or added this in, and I think that that's important discussion to have.
Yeah, which is one of the reasons why you do it in public, right? So people can see you wrestling with the tough thing, you didn't just walk in three two and walk out three two and nobody said why.
And that's what I'd like to be known for, that we all say our piece and that we're willing to shift things to gain consensus.
Then we need to not have three or four hour meetings to be able to do those conversations.
Yes.
I purposely don't speak up, you know, the last couple of times, because I wanna get to work at two in the morning.
Too full.
Yeah, I've, I've got work in a few hours, so I don't want to speak up and have that kind of conversation, because we've got too much in front of us.
If we have any more dog issues, we need to have entirely separate meetings for them.
You know, one thing too, I was thinking about, uh, and some of the things that I wrote as well, is that, um, and it's kind of in keeping with not just where we stand, but sometimes we have maybe spoken to each other individually, or we've spoken to staff, and we've clarified issues for ourselves, um, but making sure that in meetings, even when we have some easy decisions, unless it's like a national grid utility poll, that we clarify for the public what those decisions are based on. I do think that was something that Jim was very good at, that he would sort of take a step back and, and say, you know, just so everyone understands, and, and I think that's something that, um, is valuable in terms of the public having the information they need and understanding where we're coming from.
Yeah, so kind of that role that you all have to really educate the public sometimes on why this is the answer, you know, it's a, this is something that has to be done.
And I also think that with sometimes with long meetings, those are things that kind of get lost.
Yeah.
A bit.
How do we, you know, we want to be known for really deliberating and going from a three two to a five oh, and adding on motions, really discussing things, and it not go over, or the perspective to change that, oh, they can never make a decision.
Mm-hmm.
I, I wouldn't feel, if we did that, I wouldn't feel that way, but from maybe the outside view, is there a way that we could make sure that we, I don't really know exactly what I'm saying. Right, because we deliberate a lot on things, could it be seen that we just can't make a decision?
There's wishy washy here.
Right.
Or indecisive, yeah.
Because it's more like you've really thought it all through, and there's been a very thorough discussion of the items, and it wasn't a wishy washy decision, it was thoroughly.
Vetted.
Vetted.
Yeah.
How do we explain to the public, like, you want a board to have a discussion on, an open session on Wednesday night, you don't want them coming with their decision before they, six AM, six PM, and they know why they're gonna vote?
Yeah.
Like, how do we explain that to the public?
I think that's also a little bit of a skill set for board members to have, is that recognition when we have each said what we're going to say and we're ready to vote, I think, recognizing that we've had the discussion and we're not at a point of compromise at this point, we're ready to vote.
Mm-hmm, yeah, you might, you might be there, you might just have to name it, that, you know, I'm, I'm hearing people restate the same things, doesn't seem like we're making movement, it's time to see, you know, where the votes are on this and what direction we want to give to the staff and what, what decision we want to make. Yeah, there's a, um, one of the things under respect here is, uh, understanding that respect can be earned by speaking on issues only when they have new insights to share that will further debate, um, asking genuine questions of other and exercising their strengths in a way that other people value, you know, everyone has the right to speak. You earn the right to be listened to, right? You know, let's see, that, it would, if I'm, if I'm willing to listen to you, somehow you have earned that, um, in how you've, how, in our interactions and, and how we've done things, and so keeping that in mind, uh, John and I were working in Palo Alto, California with their city council, they have nine on their council. They have a practice of um, two rounds of comments for the elected officials. First round, they get five minutes, second round, they get three. And, and they have a hard stop at eleven PM. So I very quickly did a little bit of math, and I said, so that means you can do about three items per meeting, and John, my professor friend, says, oh, no, Julia, that's not, they don't, they don't all speak every time on every issue. And I said, I think that's what they're saying, and they said, oh, yes, we do, so seventy-two minutes of comment, not including public comment or other things, and, you know, John's just like, how is that adding value? You know, how are you really adding value? And so really recognizing, you know, who are you speaking to and why? One is, I want to try to persuade my colleagues, another is, I want the public to understand my position or the position of the body, you know, kind of, you know, how am I adding new information to that? So, just kind of keeping all that in mind can help. And sometimes it's fair to say, you know, everyone is, has, you know, I agree with, with what Dawn said, and she made some great points, and I don't need to restate them, I just want to say that this is something I care deeply about as well, and this will be how I'm voting, and just putting it out there without having to, to restate it.
That's a quick question, Julia.
Absolutely.
Uh, Rita and I have had some of these conversations over the years randomly, of, do you think it's beneficial, or what kind of relationships do we have to have to make it beneficial for us? I, I make a comment, and Rita turns to me and says, could you go, I don't, I don't, I'm not sure on that, what do you mean by this, this, and this?
Mm-hmm.
Because I, my, my first year on the board, I don't, I didn't see that happen a lot, it was like, we were all in our silos, we stayed a little bit longer, and the chair would be like, okay, looks like we're ready for a vote.
Mm-hmm.
I like it when Rita nicely asks Matt something, and it's not controversial, but it's like, what do you mean by this? And I get to listen to this, and I learned from that conversation.
So that, being curious about one another's positions, you, you can do that after the meeting when you're trying to process it, or you can perhaps, you want to do it at the meeting, so you're not missing an insight that someone else is sharing, and so I think that's a, that, it's a great way to just kind of even frame it of, you know, Matt, why'd you say that? Why do you think that? Or?
Is that dangerous though?
I'm curious.
Good to be careful about that, when we, when we ask each other questions in open sessions? Sorry to interrupt you.
Um, only if it becomes too, too long on an issue, I mean, I think that's where, you know, you all are kind of making these decisions about, okay, do we need to vote and move on, is it getting too late, so Matt's all of a sudden quiet, he's not gonna talk anymore tonight, because he's gotta be at work soon, you know, kind of weighing that, I think, or even recognizing sometimes, and I think you all said that, recognizing when waiting to vote is okay, and, and, you know, sometimes you might just say, I'm hearing that, you know, people are having a really hard time reaching um, a decision about this, and so, you know, tell them like to move to table this to another meeting, and assuming it's not gonna mess up a bond vote or issuance or something like that, you, you know, sometimes the right thing to do is wait, and then come back at another time.
Do you feel it's okay being chair if I ask Rita a question, because then all, now, now all of a sudden, we're almost facilitating the meeting if we're asking each other questions? Are you fine with that?
Yeah, I mean, I think that it's, you kind of like
Feedback.
Go through, through the chair generally with those same questions, but, but no, I think that that's appropriate.
Yeah, so, and, and do you typically recognize other people to, when it's their turn to speak?
People, they'll usually start like, sing, signal me, and I mean, sometimes they're, it's silent and someone will just jump in, which is fine too. I mean, there's only five of us, so it's not, it's not keeping control of a huge body.
Right, right. I think, I think it reinforces the role of the chair when you want to ask Matt um, to, to say, you know, chair, and you all, you all use last names at the meetings, I'm trying to remember. You're not, you're pretty informal in that regard, right? So, um, you know, you don't say madam chair, you say, you know, Dawn is.
I actually always say madam chair.
You do, okay.
I do, because I want to make sure the public.
Knows.
Know they need to go through her.
Gotcha, so, I mean, doing that, again, so, madam chair, is it all right if I ask a question of my colleague, and, and then that way just kind of reinforcing that it is, it is her running the meeting and the opportunity to get new thoughts, get questions answered, and move it to a vote when it's ready to go.
I also want the public to know that it's madam chair, they will call her mister chair, I mean, we get lots of different.
Yes, right.
Madam moderator for occasion.
Yeah. It was funny, at the same time we were doing some work here, we were working in Westboro, and they had a very, like, we are the selectmen, uh, you know, it was like very important to them, that tradition piece of things, and so just different, very different values than you express there when you say that, so, and it's right for their community, and it's right for your community, and that's what matters, right? Other questions that you have about what's up here? I, I'd be interested to ask Libby and Greg if there are things that you think the staff is looking for that didn't quite make the list.
Um, I, I don't, I think this is in there, probably, but I think it's nice that when the board has our back, we have their back also. Regardless of what it is, like, if it's a vote that we didn't agree with, we are not in a position to say, well, that was a stupid vote, and we're not gonna do it, or if that was a stupid vote, so now we have to do it.
Yeah.
It's our role to say, doesn't matter what we think about it, it was a vote and we need to do it.
Execute, yeah.
Um, so, and same, you know, a, a little bit with them, they would have an issue if we were saying what I just said.
Yeah.
We don't really want to do your vote, fine, call us out on that, but helping with it is, I mean, it's, it's a two-way street, like, we just had a valet parking thing, for example, no one likes it, I shouldn't say no one, there's, there's some public outcry a bit about it. Um, but we are very actively working on it, and we are very actively saying, hey, board voted it, they want to have valet parking, it was otherwise gonna go away. It's Rita's an important part of our whole overall program, so, sorry, but that's, that's what it is.
Yeah.
So if people are going to the board, oh, I don't like what Libby and Greg said about, you know, there's too many spots that are taken, or, I don't like your sign, or.
Taking away our free parking.
Now you're forcing us to um, to par, move our cars every two hours, that kind of thing. We all, we all need to have, you know, the same message to people.
Yeah, having each other's backs.
Yeah, yeah, being in sync with having each other's backs, I guess.
The message is, we added five, more than five hundred cars last year, we can't do things the same way. That's what I said, well, what do you think? You know, you can't, you can't bring guns to school anymore, you used to bring guns to school when I was a kid, can't do that anymore, you know, the things are different.
Yeah, and the question is, if you're putting yourself in a situation where you have to move your car every two hours because it's staying stationary for the whole day, why are you bringing your car?
You're the one, you're what we're trying to change.
There's a whole nother question that we need to start asking, right? But that concept of whatever it is and things like that, and, you know, I'm sure for, for those of you that are here year round, it becomes, this, this season is both the, what keeps everything going, and um, it can be a real pain in the neck sometimes, right? And so kind of recognizing there's trade-offs and have each other's back for that is really important. Good, thank you. Anything else?
I have a question.
Yeah.
One, so, sometimes I'll do this, and I know it might not, I want to hear what people think, but sometimes it's not, uh, how do I say it? Sort of like, sort of in the case of a differative, something very, you know, very complicated, that the planning department has accepted, and they think it's the greatest thing ever, but they haven't done the work and blah, 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 and they bring it to us, and they're trying to get us to, you know, to agree with them. And, you know, and they'll agree, yep, we'll do all the work, and they still come back and they haven't done it, sometimes I'll, I'll sort of say, well, you know, I don't know, I don't care how you guys vote, but it would be irresponsible, this is. I don't know, I don't care how you guys vote, but it would be irresponsible. This is, you know, for, to vote for something now that we don't understand. And so I'm putting the, you know, I'm basically saying, and I don't, you know, you know, we'd be, you guys would be irresponsible to take this vote. And I, you know, I think sometimes that's a, that's a strong position. I don't do it very often, but I've done it a couple of times. And I just wonder, is that an acceptable thing to say? Because when I feel really strongly about something, is that acceptable or not?
So I think, go ahead.
I was going to say, I think it's acceptable before the vote.
Yeah.
I don't think it's acceptable after the vote.
And I would say a better way to frame it would be, it would be irresponsible for me to vote on something that I don't understand. And so it's, it kind of, it's possible, you could hold the possibility then that your colleagues do understand and they're able to reach the decision with different information or less information than you might need. And so I think when you own it for yourself, then it's, makes it more respectful dissent. You know, I'm not in a position to make a decision because I don't have the information that I was looking for. And so it would be irresponsible for me to support this.
It would still come out the same way in this case, because I've read everything and I understood the whole thing.
Yes.
I understood it better than the people putting a Ford.
It's not that you didn't.
So it's kind of, you know.
It's not that you didn't do the work, it's that it wasn't there, what you needed to, you know, what you asked for, what you believe is was necessary. So I think just owning it for yourself rather than for others makes that a little more powerful.
Trying to make it, yeah, I got you.
Yeah.
And do it before.
And do it before the vote, afterwards.
Threaten before the vote, not after, okay.
To them, all the vote irresponsible might be a little, hmm, well, I don't feel like we were irresponsible and so.
I learned my lesson on that last year. I talked after the vote and then Dawn, I talked about it, we went up to Boston, like, okay, I get it now.
Yeah.
I get it.
Yeah.
Just let, just let it go.
Sometimes you're going to learn things the hard way, right? It's not, we're not always going to be perfect. So maybe a little bit of grace with one another as you go through all of this and the learning that that comes along with being on the board for a while. Sure, absolutely.
It also gets harder when you've been involved over so many years and have seen some of the shenanigans and the stuff that have happened.
Yes.
And then you see it happening again, or you see the same people trying to pull the same stuff, it gets a little harder not to, you know.
Call them on it?
Yeah, because, you know, it's sort of, anyway. Not to be a little more, but I will speak ahead, I'll be ahead of it.
I think we do have to be really clear and concise about for the, on the staff side of what information we're looking for when we need more information.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To be specific, if you want more information, be specific in that follow up. Good.
And sometimes we might want to bring something to you just to say, what more information do you want? Here's what we have so far. What else do you need to make a decision?
Yeah, I thought that that was really productive with the Washington Street thing.
Yeah. And some things are not prescribed.
Comes from the public too.
Yeah, some are not prescribed, but something like the diff is prescribed. There's, you know, twenty things that by code and by law have to be done before you make a decision.
Yeah.
And so you ask the, you know, the person bringing it, are you going to have all this for us next time? Yeah, we certainly will. Then it shows up and it's not there again, but they're still pushing, and it wasn't done. They're still pushing hard on the board and maybe some of the board members understand that there are twenty things that should have been done. Maybe they don't. And so you have a hard time. Those are the kind of things.
Yeah.
It's a really political, you know, we want this money set aside, even if it's coming away from the school and coming from something else because we want these roads. It's a really political decision that's, you know, sort of, so you, so sometimes it's different. Sometimes it is a Washington Street and we can kind of know what we want to know, but sometimes it's prescribed what you should know.
Right.
And and I think we have to be aware of when it's prescribed, are we going to actually get it?
All right. Well, the clock ticks to one and so I feel like I should need to honor that end time for you all and I appreciate your engagement. It went fast, yeah, right? So I appreciate your engagement. We'll start tomorrow with just a quick reflection on today. So I'll let you just kind of check in a little bit before we jump into the meat of the strategic planning tomorrow. So.
What time and where tomorrow?
So eleven AM at Bartlett Farms, at the barn.
That's the lot.
The Haloc, sorry.
You could.
You can ride your bike.
Might be a nice day for a bike ride. Or pick him up at a certain spot at a certain time.
Are we talking about carpooling? Because I'll take a ride.